A couple of weeks back, we had the Belen family here. And their son is a little bit, what would you, how would you describe his?
He needs independent facilitation.
Okay. And what the government has done, they've cut funding, okay? And as a council, we support, we want the government to bring back into the funding. So there's a petition here up at my desk, and it'll be handed out. I'd like all the councillors, if they would support it, sign it. And it'll be passed out in the audience, if the audience will sign it. I really appreciate it. Thank you. And the second item I got, and this is kind of a sad situation, really. We're losing our CEO, okay? And tonight's an extra special night for a person that was very dedicated to this town. And she did one great job. Donna came on board as my first term on council 17 years ago. And it's an understatement to say how much she's had a lasting impact on our community. She's done a great job in that position. And she's brought this municipality forward in a very positive way. In her time as treasurer and director, and most recently as CEO, Donna has done much more to improve the financial health of our municipality. And it's quite obvious, we could see it. She's led the transition of the Ontario Provincial Policing Model, made the financial case for a twin-padded arena in the Essex Centre, and helped to have the town be the shareholder of Elk. As a chief administrator, Donna's brought a ton of knowledge and a positive attitude to the council table. You could always walk into her office, and she was always there to help us. She always had guidance for us. So Donna, on behalf of council and the citizens of the town of Essex, I want to thank you for your service. It's been great working with you. And no, we're not going to let you go. We wish you all the best in your retirement, though. Thank you very much. If you want to come up front. The media would like to take a picture. We'll be right up front. And if council would like to come forward and run, that'd be nice. Come on, I'd like council up here, too.
Donna, if you can get in her arms. They're going to pull you up.
So we're going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask council, is there any conflict of interest? And could I have, are we going to do the notice?
Yeah.
Was it Kim?
Well, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Closed meeting report?
Oh, yeah, I have the closed meeting report.
And then we'll do adoption.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick closed meeting report. Council met this, earlier this evening in closed session, under two provisions as permitted under the municipal act. The first one is 239-2C. And council at that meeting received an update from administration concerning a proposed land acquisition matter. The other matter that council met in closed session as permitted under the municipal act, under 239-2B, council received a report from the Town of Essex Human Resources Manager on workplace matters involving identifiable individuals, including town employees. That's the extent of my report this evening. Your worship.
Thank you, Rob. Was there any conflict of interest amongst council members, sir? No. Adoption of published agenda. Can I have a moment? Oh, you want the notice motion first?
No, through you, Mr. Mayor. I was, I just had one, I believe, one proposed amendment to the adopted agenda this evening. And that was just a proposed addition to agenda item 11.2.1. And that would be a verbal report, I believe, from councillor Verbeek, coming out of the Town of Essex Striking Committee meeting that was held earlier this evening.
She can do that now.
We'll do it under 2.1.
Okay, good. Okay. And adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, so just looking for a motion to adopt the published agenda as amended.
Have a mover. Deputy Mayor Malasch and councillor Garan, all in favor? Carrie.
Thank you, your worship. 5.1 on the agenda, that the minutes of the regular council meeting of February 19th, 2019, be adopted is circulated.
Have a mover. Councillor Bowman, seconded. Deputy Mayor Malasch. Any questions? All in favor? Carrie.
5.2, the minutes of the special council meeting of February 19th, 2019, be adopted is circulated.
Mover. Councillor Bondi and councillor Bowman. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item seven of the agenda is unfinished business. And this is from the February 19th regular council meeting. At that meeting, the, on the agenda was Corporate Services Report 2019-02. Council resolved at that meeting to table that report until a further report is received from administration, providing comparative information from other municipalities regarding the waiving of multi-residential development fees. That updated, or that further report is now before council this evening in the way of Corporate Services Report 2019-03. And together with that report, our Director of Corporate Services is going to provide a presentation. Once that report, 2019-03, has been received and the presentation, then presumably council would then take back from the table the original, the preceding report, 2019-02. And then council could consider that report for receipt and/or the recommendations noted therein.
Thank you, Rob. Jeff, if you're ready, go ahead.
Through the chair. I'm just going to give an overview of how the funding model works. I gave it previously when we did affordable housing and commercial for the new councillors. I thought it would be a good exercise to kind of walk through how the actual funding model would work. So we have the multi-residential housing. It's DC rebate. So base year, base year represents the year of construction. The year of construction, year zero, base year prior to the completion, and the town collecting potential tax revenue from that development. The tax revenue. So we're going to assume that tax revenue for the town is $500 a year. The base year amount is $500. Imagine there's only one development coming forward. So we're going to collect $500 moving forward. Then you have your development charges. So the project comes forward, the development charges are calculated, they're $100. The decision is made to rebate those development charges. Therefore, the development charges are $0 to the individual that's building. So for this example, the municipal-wide development charge is waived at $100, or 100%. So it's down to zero. However, those development charges need to be funded from somewhere. So whether it's an internal loan, whether we carry it in our general fund, there's $100 that needs to go back into development charges to pay for development charges. Because if you waive them, you've got to pay for them. So for this example, that money would come from an internal loan, say landfill reserve. So $100 would be loaned internally to cover those development charges. So 100, the development charges are now back up to $100, and they're made whole. So the development charges are paid back through a loan from the landfill reserve in this situation. Then you have the new tax on development, zero, because it's construction year. Then you move into year one. So the tax revenue for the town is $500 again. Because we're assuming there's only one development. So the development is complete. Yay. So the new tax from that development is $25. So that $25 in new tax revenue goes to pay back the landfill reserve. So now $25 goes to pay back that landfill reserve to cover the development charges. Now year two, $500 in tax revenue. The new tax revenue from the development is another $25. That then goes to pay back the landfill reserve. Now we have $50 in there. Year three, same, $500 in tax revenue. We have $25 from the new tax from the development, goes to pay back the landfill reserve, $25. Now it's up to $75. We have one more year to go. So this is a four-year payback period. Year four, we have a tax revenue of $500. New tax revenue on the development is $25. That goes to pay back the landfill reserve, $100. It's fully paid back now. So we've replenished our development charges and paid back that loan. So now year five, tax revenue is $500. But wait a sec, it's $25 in new tax. So that $25 in new tax now becomes part of that tax revenue for year five. So now our tax revenue is $525 moving forward. That's my presentation.
I guess what I'm wondering, Mr. Morrison, so the numbers that you're showing here, are they, is this the direct proportions? Like, the development charges that we're, that we want to charge on this project are exactly 20% of whatever the tax revenue is from this property? And then the same with the new tax development? Is it, you know, you're showing $25 over the $500? And that tax revenue on the, on the green line, what is that tax revenue? That's for an empty lot, or is that for a building, or what the value, assessed value of the new building is going to be? Like, that's what I'm not sure of.
Through the chair. This is just for illustration purposes. It's not in relation to the development proposal that was received. It's just for illustration purposes. So the tax revenue in the green line, that would be the amount of tax we receive each year. It doesn't include growth. It doesn't include assessment increases. It's just a base number to say, here's our pre-development tax. So our pre-development tax is $500. After the payback period for this example, which would be a four-year period, which I simplified for the example, year five, our post-development tax in year five would be $525. So then we'd start realizing the revenue from that additional tax. So it doesn't relate back to the proposal. It's just a generic example to show how the funding mechanism would work.
Okay. Thank you. So, okay, thank you. If I may, Jeff.
If I may. So you're saying after the fifth year, that's when we start getting our return on our taxes for that development?
Through the chair, in this example, yes. Through the report that was prepared for the last meeting, the payback period was calculated at 1.8 to a 3.24, depending on the size of the development. So for this example, yes, I did a four-year period for simplification.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions before Jeff goes forward? Councillor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, it's maybe more of a point of information, but there may be people, delegations for and against here tonight, and I would hope that council would entertain anybody in the audience that wants to speak for the, for the development. That's all.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff. Are you finished? Okay. So if we can have somebody, seconded? Any questions? All in favor? Carrie. Thank you.
So now we need to bring 2019-02 from the table.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to have to, to bring this, we tabled it, we're going to have to bring it back for discussion, council. So could I have a mover to bring it back? We tabled it, so it's got to come back forward. Councillor Garan, seconded. Councillor Bowman, all in favor? Carrie. Okay. Questions? What's your preference? What's council looking at doing here, their direction? Councillor Bondi?
Mr. Mayor, I, now that we have a motion back on the table, I don't know if people can speak. I'm not sure if there's anybody in the audience that came out with the intention of speaking tonight, but it is a fairly contentious issue. I believe the developers are here, and I believe there's an older gentleman in the front that would like to speak. I'm not sure if anybody else would like to speak, but...
Councillor Bondi, that's not what the meeting is tonight. You know, it'll be a chance at a later date, but not tonight. Thank you. Councillor Bjorkman?
Thank you, your worship. So I watched our meeting on YouTube from last week, and followed along with what was happening, just to make sure that it doesn't happen again tonight. And for our younger members, when a motion is brought forward and has been seconded, we do not look to the audience to see if they agree with the motion that we're making. That's not part of it. We make decisions at this table for policy. We don't negotiate. We don't ask for influence outside of this table. So what happened last week can't happen here again. That being said, I'm in favor of what the, what administration has brought forward. I'm not in favor of waiving the sanitary fees. The taxpayers built a pollution plant out here with the promise of future development would pay the bill for the rest of that pollution plant. This is the sort of thing that will pay for that. The last two years, the taxpayers in this town have put $4 million into stormwater and sanitary to take care of I&amp;I issues that are here. When we looked at the report that we received, that other towns are doing as far as their offerings, that councillor Vander Olen had asked for, there's only one other town in the county that waives the fees. There's another town that, that waives fees up to $200,000. But if this same development was happening in that town, it would cost them $170,000. And our proposal is $123,000. So it's still the cheapest place in the county right now that waives development fees. So looking at all of that, and what the town has already done, and what the taxpayers in this town have already taken care of, I think it's great to be able to do the tax incremental repayment. But as far as the wastewater goes, that's the responsibility of everybody who develops here and comes into the town. So I would be in favor of the motion that administration has put forward. Thank you.
Anybody else from council? Deputy Mayor Malasch.
Thank you, through you, your worship. I'm, I've got a similar opinion to councillor Bjorkman, a little bit different angle, but what I'd like to see is the offer to go back and still be receptive of not charging development charges in the, and use the program that Mr. Morrison was showing us earlier, for development charges other than wastewater. But with wastewater, perhaps make an offer that we could defer the charges on wastewater. So what we'd do is, we would wait until there's a revenue stream before we would charge the wastewater development charge. We're trying to give some incentive, and at the same time, I think we've gone deep enough, we've never actually gone into any development, and offered this kind of a discount on development charges. But I think it's something that would be, would be a good development for both parties. I believe that if they put this apartment building here in Essex, that you're going to see full rental on that apartment building in, in no time. And I think it'll be a successful project. But I don't, I can't see giving away all of the development charges upfront. I think we've gone as deep as what we can, based on what I'm hearing from different persons and talking to mayors and deputy mayors also across the, across the county. Everyone would like to have a development, of course, us included. But this is a large-scale project, I think we can afford to, and maybe we can afford to, but I'm in agreement that we will, to go ahead and not charge the development charges on the regular type items. But on wastewater, I believe that we have to stick to our guns here on this one. But at the same time, if we could work out a plan that those charges would be deferred until there's revenue from the project, and maybe borrow the money to put into the fund until such time that we would be able to recollect those deferred charges. So that's, that's my thoughts on it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Verbeek?
Through you, your worship. Certainly, I'm really excited about having this, this development, as are many people. I'm hearing from even local residents that just live on that street, that are saying like, it's about time. I have a cousin over here with a beautiful home on Fairview, that says she wants to put a for-sale sign in her, on her mansion and put into rent. So we also know right now that there is a, like, there's a national housing crisis. And we, we, we need to take action to, you know, help the people in our municipality. And we have, it feels to me like we have this, we have this gift in front of us right now. And I think that we should be looking at every avenue to embrace and roll out the red carpet and, and, so my understanding, too, is that we, we already waive fees for geared-to-income. If this developer or someone else wanted to waive fees to geared-to-income or low-income building to put on this exact site, I, it's a question, too, is this, is it true that these fees are waived? And if that is the case, why on earth wouldn't we want to do the same for this, this beautiful facility they're looking at putting in right now? Also, we know that development breeds development. We're bringing at least 100-plus new residents to the community. And I just think we could be missing an opportunity. I would support waiving the, the development charges. I'd also wonder if, I would not be opposed to the water waste, waiving that or deferring it as suggested by councillor Malasch. And I just hope that we, I just, to me, it feels like we're looking at possibly missing a really great opportunity. How many, how often has this come along in 30 years to our community, is a question, too?
Yeah. Well, we can speak. Thank you, councillor. Any other questions? Councillor Bowman?
I would support the position that councillor Bjorkman put forward as well. I think it covers this fairly well.
Okay. Councillor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I was prepared to move on at last time, and I'm, you know, maybe, I, I believe in what Ms. Verbeek is saying. And I think that, maybe because I've been here for three terms, I've kind of seen some stagnation. And in the earlier meeting at 5 o'clock, we had quotes from both our mayor and our deputy mayor, saying we want to take an aggressive approach, we want to open the doors, and our council has to get aggressive. Well, yes, you know, it is great waiving two-thirds. That's absolutely something, but I don't think it's enough. And I, and I don't think it's enough because I take a look in the mirror, and I look at our council, and I look at our town, and I'm sorry, I'll be really honest, our council has had a lot of infighting for the last eight years. Unfortunately, this isn't, this is coming at the beginning of this term. This is a new term. It's a great term. We have a great council, but we haven't always had that. We haven't had the best reputation in Essex. So, you know, we have a lot of competition around us. I look at everything now. Right now, we're getting $1,400, I believe, or say we're getting $2,000 from this parking lot. They could sit on this parking lot for, for $2,000, and we could sit on it for another 20 years. I don't want to take that risk. When we, when we open up 57 apartments, we're making our downtown core stronger, we're making our downtown businesses stronger. Do we not want a downtown core that's stronger? Absolutely. I want that. So it, to me, it's short-term gain for long-term pain. There is a strong mandate in Harrow to do the same thing. If, if this particular building was going up in Ward 4, we wouldn't even be talking about water wastewater, because that's waived. That's waived in Ward 4. It's unfortunate that you picked Essex Centre, but, you know, maybe come to Harrow. I don't know. And in terms of, when I look in the audience and when I make my decisions, I get my mandate from my people out there. I come in and try and negotiate the mandate here. But I, I'm here, I'm trying to work, but my mandate comes from my people. My people have spoken to me. I run my council business the way I choose to run my council business, and nobody at this table is going to tell me how to run my council business, unless it is harassing, which I hope I don't do, and I don't think I do. But we each have our own way we run our council business, and we each have our own vision. I do see this as a missed opportunity. It is a brown site. We haven't had any apartment building in our town for a long time. So we're going to, like, I don't want to take the risk. It's $130,000. You know, when you talk about water infrastructure and wastewater infrastructure, if you service 57 homes, the maintenance on 57 homes has got to be, and I'm no engineer, I know that, has got to be more than servicing an apartment with 57 people in it. The town is abuzz, people are excited. I know there are people that are opposing this. But they could go other routes, and they could go and get site plan approvals for other routes. This, to us, is what we've been waiting for. This is what we've worked hard for. And now for $130,000, we're going to say, you know what, we don't really want it. And, you know, they may walk away. That's not a risk I want to take, because there, there's other things that they're looking at. Parking garages, fixing sidewalks, and whatever, however formula you look at it, 1.8 or 3.4, and maybe five years, if you add in the stormwater, we'll have $100,000, I think, is around the revenue for the 57. We'll have $100,000 extra, plus people. I mean, we're stalling right now, because it could have been done a couple of weeks ago. So I don't know, I just, it will be the same old, same old, I feel, if we don't move forward tonight. I'm prepared to move forward, waiving the whole fees. I know that does, you know, I know some people are bothered by it, but right now, we're getting nothing. Right now, we're getting peanuts. I don't want to continue to get peanuts. I want this town to grow. I'm sick of sitting here in the stagnation, and that's what we keep doing to ourselves.
If I may respond to you. I did the same thing as the deputy mayor did, Deputy Mayor Malasch, and I did speak to other municipalities in our area. And he's right, and I'm right. The other municipalities do not waive. I, I think we've, we've gone beyond to help these people. And I like what deputy mayor is proposing. The deputy mayor, start charging when we have revenue coming in, you know? I don't see what's wrong with that. I think that's a great plan. When the revenue starts coming in. It's not that we're waiving it, but I think that's a great idea. But councillor Van Olen, you had a question?
Yes, through Mr. Chair. As I said last week, I'm, I'm in favor of the development. I think it's great. We need apartment buildings, we need housing. But I agree with councillors Bjorkman and Malasch that, that we've gone far enough with, with making this happen. The brownfield means, means that we don't really have to charge a developer to bring water or sewage pipes to the site, they're already there. So it makes sense to waive that. But waiving the, waiving the sewage fees would be a really bad precedent that neither we or our taxpayers can afford. It's really short-sighted, it's a bad business, business practice. It would have the rest of the county, I think, shaking their heads at Essex again, what the heck are they doing? You'd be putting the cost of, like, as councillor Bjorkman said, you know, we put millions of dollars into the ground for this stuff. And if we let developers off the hook for it, that means we're putting it on the backs of the people who can least afford it. So we'd be helping with one hand, oh, look, we're giving you housing, and we're smacking them with the other hand by making them pay for developers' underground work. So I'll be voting with the other three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was running for council, everyone was coming... When I was running for council, everyone was coming up to me and saying, "We need development." So here's a great opportunity, a good development. I'm sympathetic to the residents in the area that have sent some emails over the course of the last week or two. I think that if that building that was there prior is still there, and we're having that conversation now about removing it and taking it down and putting up a new apartment complex six stories, I think they'd probably be more in favor of it. But it's been vacant for a while, they've been looking at an open area. We're two-thirds of the way already there, in my opinion. I, I think the investment's worth going the extra one-third. I'd be supportive of that. I did like Deputy Mayor Malash's comments about getting it after the fact, so I'd maybe go that way as well, but I'm prepared to go with the no-development fees right across the board. Again, I think it's some short-term pain, and we're going to have a lot of, we all look at the long-term on this investment. It's going to be servicing Essex for, for many, many years. We don't have a lot of these opportunities, just dropping by every day on this. And I don't like comparing ourselves to other municipalities, because we're not Kingsville, not Amisburg. We're Essex. We are maybe looked at from development side of things as not quite there, maybe we don't have, in their eyes, what the Kingsvilles and Amisburgs have to offer, whatever it might be. I think this, this is an opportunity for us to, to, to get something done, and who knows what's going to come from this? I think the rollout effect from this could be very positive. So I'm, I'm, and that's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at it as more of a positive opportunity that we have before us. And we're already there two-thirds, maybe more than two-thirds, so to, to put another 100-plus into it. And I know we could use that money on roads, you know, I've mentioned that in our meetings, but that's where I stand. And I, I think it's a really good opportunity, and I think that overall, it's going to benefit long-term all of Essex. Thank you.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. I know we've all spoken to this, but this is a big item. We're, we're talking to each other, and, and if I approach council, if there's anybody else that would like to speak a gain to it, if you feel it's, it's valued, because I would like to say something else, and if others would, well, our rule is once, so I just want to make sure that that's...
Go ahead, go ahead. We need a motion, so go ahead.
Then we, we brought this motion back.
Yeah.
Right? So this is a motion?
Yeah.
We're speaking to this motion. So that's what I'm asking, if it's all right with council, if they feel it's worth a little more time?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm listening to everybody talking around the table, and, and I agree, this, this investment that we're looking at, that's coming to us, is very important. But what we're discussing tonight is policy. We're not discussing the development that's coming here. Now, it's going to affect the development that's coming here, so it's natural for us to go to there. But we are looking at policy tonight. We're not, we're not saying that there is no other avenue to what the Deputy Mayor has said. This, this, we're looking to make our policy, we either waive all the development charges for all multi-residential development, not just one. So that's what we're looking at doing this evening. So if we're doing this one, then the next one falls under the same category, is my belief. Would that be correct to the CAO? Okay, so that doesn't take away the tools that our administration has to find other ways to help our developers work here. So we need to kind of pull back from that to make sure that we're looking at this as a, as a big-picture item. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking some more on, on where I stood. I came out here pretty sure of myself and exactly where I want to go, so I just sitting here doing some math. On 57 units, that $123,000, which is the difference, is $2,000 an apartment. You can get a CIP grant to change apartments uptown, and you can get $5,000 per apartment to change it from, to make it affordable. Now, up there, we, we do have that affordable tag to it, but that's available to anybody developing properties in town. Again, I, you just have to, a big part of it for me is to, to make sure that we, we know that we are setting policy tonight. We're not talking about one development, we're talking about the Town of Essex policy, and that our administration has the tools to negotiate with developers coming in. It still comes to us, but there are other ways to go about this. So I just, that's, my one big thing I wanted to say is, keep in mind, this is about creating policy for all multi-unit developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? Counselor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to our policy planner, and our planner perhaps, Rita Jabor. The CIP, how in our quest, they qualified for the tax increment financing because they did a development on the brownfield. Would that qualify here at all or not because it's residential? That's my first question.
Through you, Mr. Chair. They wouldn't qualify because they're not in our CIP area.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So I'm all about creating a policy, and right now, unfortunately, because they chose Essex Center instead of Harrow Center, they have to pay the water wastewater, because if they developed today, if they had the shovel in the ground in Harrow Center, then they'd be, they'd be ready to go. So I think each council member has to ask themselves, are they willing to risk it? Right? Are you willing to risk it because of their location? Because they picked the northern half rather than the southern half? You should have picked the southern half, you know, we're, we kind of shine brighter down there. So anyways, I'm not willing to wish, risk it. I like your comments, Counselor Bjorkman, about looking at the policy. I'd love to create a policy. I'd love to do a six-month, 0% res, 0% development fees on multi-residential. Let's see what we can get in six months, because I guarantee if we do that, their shovel will be in the ground, and maybe perhaps we get one in Harrow, and then we're all better and stronger for it. I don't see it as short-sighted. I don't think people will go, what the heck, what the heck they're doing. I think it's going to be the opposite. I think we need this. This is going to stimulate and inspire developers in our, in our council.
For any other questions? I can just say one thing, I do like the Deputy Mayor's approach on this. No wastewater charge until there's revenue coming in. I think that's, that's the way to go, that's the way I would look at it. At least, we're helping the developers out, we're not putting a financial burden on them right off the bat, and I think, I think that's a, I think that's good, Deputy Mayor. So that's, that's my, my view on it, but we're going to go from here where council wants to move. Deputy Mayor Malash?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll make a motion then, or there's a motion on the table?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a point of clarification. The original motion from the February 19th meeting that provided for a waiver was withdrawn. The motion that was tabled and which was taken from the table this evening was to receive 2019-02, and for council to provide direction to administration on whether to waive or not waive. So that hasn't been clarified. That, and, and the table, the motion to take from the table was moved by Counselor Garren, seconded by Bowman. So we would need that, presumably that direction, that clarification on whether to waive or not waive.
So Mr., to Mr. OJ?
Yep.
So can someone make a suggestion as to what we want to see?
Through, through the Chair.
Or do we need to change the motion that was there already?
So the mover is Counselor Garren, the seconder is Bowman. Assuming they're agreeable to the suggestion, it could be because it's their motion, then I, I think this motion could continue.
Okay, so can, can you tell me what the motion is again right now?
That Corporate Services Report 2019-02 be received, and that council provide direction on whether it's desired to provide a waiver of the municipal-wide services portion of development charges through a rebate for multi-residential developments. So essentially, the same recommendation that was in the original report. Because there, there was, once again, back at the February 19th meeting, there was a motion to move with that waiver, but it was subsequently withdrawn. And then what was tabled was just consideration and receipt of the report as provided back on February 19.
Okay. So the motion right now is waiving of two-thirds of the development charge?
The motion right now is simply to receive the report and, and for council, and, and for council to provide direction to admin on whether it's desired to provide a waiver or not. So, so that direction is still what's needed, I guess, to complete that motion.
And can that come from anyone, or does it have to come from Counselor Garren and Counselor Bowman?
It's Counselor Garren's motion. So it either comes from him, or the mover and seconder could agree to that, to that clarification as part of their motion.
Or they could withdraw.
Or they could withdraw.
Withdraw and have a new, new motion.
And provide a new motion.
Yeah. That's up to them, to the mover and the... You can withdraw your motion, and we can have a new motion put forward.
Okay. So I'll, I'll hold off on making a motion and let one of them speak first. It may be easier that way.
These two made the motion, they brought it back.
Okay, so maybe I won't make a suggestion, is that what you want to suggest? Are you looking at Counselor Garren?
I'm lost.
Okay. I'm a little bit lost too, but...
Counselor, just a conference. We have a, we have a mover and a seconder. What's your pleasure here?
If I might, to the mover, I think our motion was a little vague, so it probably should be withdrawn and a new motion put forward.
Exactly.
That is more clear. If that's okay?
Yeah. Okay? You agree? Agree to that? Okay, so we, we're going to have to have a new motion. So if somebody wants to make a new motion, Deputy Mayor Malash?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll make a motion, see where it goes. So what I'd like to see is that we waive the two-thirds, all development charges other than wastewater, but when it comes to the wastewater, that we would strike up an agreement with the developer that says those wastewater charges wouldn't be collectible until there's a revenue stream coming from, and, I mean, we can say, we can put a timeframe on it, or we can defer it until some, when the taxes jump to the level that, or when the revenue, when we know that it's maybe 50% occupied, or 30% occupied, or 100% occupied, whatever we want to put in the agreement, but work out some kind of an agreement that the wastewater charges aren't going to affect them in their upfront monies to start the development.
Could I have a seconder for that? Okay, Counselor Bjorkman. Questions on the motion? Counselor Van Nolten?
Through the Chair to Administration, at what point do we normally collect wastewater fees?
Jeff?
Through the Chair. They're due upfront upon issuance of the building permit.
So in effect, with, with this motion, we, they're not paying them. So nobody would have to pay them. Am I right? Does that set the precedent that nobody would have to pay them until they basically want to?
If, I may, I can answer that. They wouldn't pay them until they had revenue coming in.
What the...
Jeffrey?
Section 27-1 in the Development Charge Act provides for agreement of early or late payment. Under the Report 2019-03 that did the comparison to other municipalities, Amisburg uses a delayed agreement, and they collect 18 months after construction. So we can, as Deputy Mayor Malash identified, we can enter into an agreement that delays based on time or occupancy, but they will be collectible, and if they aren't paid at that point, we have the authority that it's taxed.
Thanks, Mr. Morrison. But I'd advise the Chair that we might want to really nail down the definition of, I like saying when the cash flow or something is too vague. I mean, you could get into all kinds of Hollywood accounting there, and, you know, you wouldn't, maybe occupancy is the right word.
Okay. You want to put that into motion? Counselor Bjorkman?
If I can to that, I think we should give Administration the leeway to negotiate that item. We're saying that we're going to eliminate the upfront fees, then we, before it gets passed, that, that Administration and the proponent negotiate together and bring back to us what, what, what they work out. That's up to, to them to work out, and we could put that into motion.
It's up to Deputy Mayor Malash. Did you want to put that into motion, Deputy?
Yeah. So Counselor Garren just wrote me a note here, and I thought it was a pretty good suggestion, that it could be 18 months from the first rental, or at 50% occupancy, something along that line. But I think that, I think that I probably would say, let's go back to Administration and have them come back with something that they know is solid, rather than us voting on something that they could come back to us later and say, there's an issue with what you're, you're trying to put in the motion. I, I'd feel more comfortable doing it that way.
Jeffery, you've got something to add?
Through the Chair. Providing feedback right now, I'd recommend a timeline, because it's like gross income versus net income. You want the top of the gross, that way you don't get all the deductions in there. I don't know how we determine occupancy. It'd be difficult for us on our end, so I think a timeline from completion of destruction, construction would probably be the best option.
If I may, Jeff, are you, have you got any timeline in, in your mind?
I think 18 months is probably reasonable.
Pardon me?
18 months.
18 months? Sound good with the mover?
It's good with the mover.
Any other questions? All in favor? Mr. Carey? Thank you. Okay. Okay, where are we at now? 8.1 on the agenda, Community Services, 2019-007. Read Special Events Resource Team March Update for receipt this evening. Give it to the audience, I'll take this. Need a motion for receipt? Yeah, motion to receive this report? Counselor Bjorkman and Deputy Mayor Malash, any questions on this report? All in favor? Mr. Carey? Thank you.
8.2, Infrastructure and Development, 2019-04. Read Proposed Restructuring of Union Water Supply System. Update and Next Steps for receipt this evening.
Motion to receive? Counselor Verbeek, seconder, Counselor Bowman, any questions on this report? All in favor? Mr. Carey?
8.3, Legal and Legislative Services, 2019-007. Read Drainage Board Terms of Reference for receipt, and that the terms of reference be approved and adopted.
Mover? Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Bowman and Counselor Bjorkman, any questions on this report? All in favor? Mr. Carey?
8.4, Legal and Legislative Services, 2019-008. Record of Revision for Bowler South Mulden Road Drain, and this is together with Provisional Bylaw 1793 for receipt, and that Dan Boudreaux, Kirk Carter, and Luke Martin be appointed from the Drainage Board to sit as members of the Court of Revision, scheduled to convene at 5:00 PM on April 1st, and that Bylaw 1793, the authorization by law for those drainage works, be, receive two readings and be provisionally adopted this evening.
Get him over. Counselor Bowman and Counselor Van Nolten, any questions on this one? All in favor? Mr. Carey?
Yep. Item 9, any reports from our youth member this evening?
No for tonight, for tonight, thank you.
It's nice to see you're here tonight. Thank you.
Item 10, any updates from County Council?
No.
11.1.1, Correspondents for Receipt from the Town of Tecumseh?
Move them all, or just the one?
Just the one.
Yeah, just one. Seconder? Counselor Bowman, any questions on this one? All in favor? Mr. Carey?
11.2.1, Drainage Board Member Resignation. That said resignation be received?
Have a mover? Counselor Verbeek and Deputy Mayor Malash, any questions? Counselor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see we have our Drainage Board Terms of Reference on our agenda tonight, but perhaps when people apply for committees, they get the Terms of Reference, so that they know how many meetings and, and everything that they're going to have, and when the meetings are usually held, so that we don't have to go through resignations after the fact that people figure out what the committee consists of, going forward.
Thank you, Counselor.
As added to the agenda...
Got to get a motion. All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Carey, thank you.
As added during adoption tonight, so to 11.2.1 is a verbal report from the Striking Committee.
I believe Counselor Verbeek was going to speak to that.
Counselor Verbeek, go ahead.
Okay. Through you, Your Worship. The Striking Committee met today to, to replace the resident that was going to serve on the Drainage Committee to bring it back up to the five. We had two residents that submitted their names. Both had very similar qualifications. Each had a lot of experience and knowledge that they could both, either one would be able to serve this committee well. So we decided to put their names, both names in a hat and draw from there. And at that point, Percy Dufour was chosen to be the final member on the Drainage Committee.
Thank you, Counselor.
So through you, Mr. Chair. We'd be looking for council to receive the verbal report and approve the recommendation and accordingly appoint.
You see the report? Counselor Bjorkman, seconder, appoint. Counselor Vannden-Don, all in favor? Skerry. Thank you.
11.2, .2. That the resignation from the Essex BIA be received with regret and that the appropriate letter of appreciation be sent.
Mover, Counselor Bjorkman, a seconder, Counselor Bowman. No questions on this? All in favor? Skerry. Thank you.
Item 12 on the agenda, that the minutes listed in Agenda Item 12, together with any recommendations noted therein, be received, approved, and adopted as circulated.
Want to do all of them?
On concern.
Yeah. On all of them, please. Could I have a mover? Counselor Garan, seconder, Counselor Bowman, any questions on any of these? All in favor? Skerry.
Under 15.1, we have two notices of motion that were originally presented at the February 19th regular council meeting and they're now being brought forward for consideration this evening. The first, under 15.1.1, is Counselor Verbeek. That the procedural bylaw be revised to allow youth members to be appointed and represent youths at council meetings regardless of the ward they reside in, as moved by Counselor Verbeek and would require a seconder.
Second, Counselor Bjorkman. Any questions on this one? No? Did you want to speak on it, Counselor Verbeek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just, I, I just wanted to say that it's just really important for us to make every effort to encourage our youth to get involved, especially with local government. And inviting to the, inviting them to the table, I think is just brilliant. It's good for us, it's good for them, it's good for the community. And currently, we have two seats with a rep from each end of the municipality, representing one and two and three and four. I think this is good, but there's times that can't happen, right? So I think that we just, I'd like to see that we just, when there isn't representation coming forth from both, from the two separate sides of the community, that we just look at any applicants from across the municipality. At some time, either maybe now or later, I'd also like us to look at gender parity when we, when we're bringing on the young people. Because we all know how important that is at any level of government and at the table.
Thank you, Counselor.
I guess I'll just say that I think that we've tried to find someone else and we had Ethan for a while, but then he stopped coming and I think it'd be nice to have someone to collaborate with again and hopefully I could bring more reports forward and having someone else to think, think of things with this and have dialogue would be good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank Ms. Verbeek for noticing this gap and bringing it and bringing a problem, a solution to a problem. I think that's, that's great. I would love to, you know, give you a little hat and call you the, our Minister of Youth now. It's too bad we don't have minister positions here, but you've always had a lot of eyes and ears in our community and noticed what our youth would like to do and I think it's great that you brought that forward. I'd also like to have the gender parity conversation around the table one day because, because we all know it is overdue. Welcome.
15.1, .2. Our second notice of motion for council's consideration this evening. That Administration provide a verbal report to council, providing further details and/or clarifying the terms and role of the climate change coordinator position as proposed in the 19, 2019 operating budget, including providing confirmation that the position is a temporary, short-term contract for no more than two years' duration and to be subsidized at a rate of at least 80% by outside agencies, as moved by Counselor Vannden-Don and would
Through you, Your Worship. All I wanted to, to point out is that the job ad was circulated to councils, also on our website, and it clearly indicates that it's a two-year term for this position, up to a two-year term, because it's not going to be quite two years at this point.
15.2 on the agenda. The following notice of motion is being presented this evening only and will be brought forward for consideration at the March 18th meeting. Counselor Bondi, that council have a public discussion about the level of service they wish to see in the fire department when it comes to water and ice rescue and that council further provide direction, subject to budget constraints, as to the level of training and equipment they wish the fire department to possess as it relates to water and ice rescue. Item six, oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to speak on it?
No.
Just received?
Nope.
Nope?
It just was presented this evening. Yep. Item 16. Any reports and announcements from council members this evening?
Yeah. Reports from council?
Which one?
Are we have reports now?
Oh, geez. Maybe just say that again. Reports and announcements.
Yeah. Any reports and announcement? Counselor Bjorkman. Start from you. Counselor Verbeek. Report.
Sure. I just, I just want to acknowledge and congratulate the hot box from Holy Name, their robotics team again this year did, did our community really proud. They finished fourth in their Ontario Innovation Celebration. Also, I just want to, you know, thank our local Knights of Columbus from MacGregor and from Essex, also from Maidstone. But they put on this basketball free throw every year and they involve our youth and our community. And I know from, you know, years as a volunteer, it's a lot of work and I'm just really grateful. It was another great event for all our local youth.
Good. Just to add to that, Counselor Harold was involved to the 53-50. That's okay. Counselor Garan?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. A couple things. Essex 73 is in the finals again. So get out there and watch them, support them. Looking for probably their 22nd, I believe, championship. And I attended the Festival Events Ontario Conference last week with Mr. Sweet and I'll have a more formal report for council in the upcoming weeks. It was very good. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Malasch.
Yes, through you, Your Worship. I just want to mention that Eckers is going to be having a, sorry, it was already on. Joe turned it on for me. But Eckers got their annual fundraiser event coming up and it's usually at the Legion. You can contact Lori Kaudyak, President of Eckers, at 519-962-9597 for tickets. It's March the 30th, Saturday, and like I said, it's at the Legion. Dinner starts at 5:30. Tickets are $20. If anyone's willing to advocate on their part and help try and sell tickets or try and get some door prizes for their silent auction, it would be greatly appreciated. And that's to help operate our Eckers here at the old library, the, what's the name of the library? Carnegie Library. At the Carnegie Library that we have here in town to keep it operating. And it's one of our historical buildings here in town and they do a great job of keeping it up. Thank you.
To me, Joe stole my thunder there. We got to get out and support them 73, so. And the first game's tomorrow night. So thanks, Joe. Counselor Bowman.
Just wanted to acknowledge that Essex lost one of its great supporters this last couple of weeks, Mr. Bob Blair. He's been involved with the Jingle Bell Run. He coached minor sports in town for years, supported team after team. He'll be missed and those are the type of people that are characters that make our town what it is. A great loss to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vannden-Don, anything to?
Not this week, thanks.
Okay. Counselor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say happy retirement to our outgoing CAO and I really see a lot of files being transferred, lots of knowledge going. I can see the beams. So that's good. You've done a great job succession planning, Mr. Nepsi, so it's a bright future. One of the big files that we didn't get cleaned up was the investigation of proxy loopholes in our municipality. Officer Primo did call me this week and he said that there is no reason why we can't in our, in our municipality start to close those loopholes, even though his investigation isn't done. We all know with Counselor Caxaro last term, there could be a by-election at any time. Officer Primo did suggest that we could call Windsor and see how they do their proxies, just in case there's a by-election. Not saying I want one, but we know it does happen.
Word from our CAO.
I'll tell you, Your Worship, and just to Counselor Bondi's point, I did, have told you, I had it in my calendar to reach out to Mike Primo at the beginning of March. I did do that this morning. I haven't heard back from him, but as soon as I do, then we will get back. Anyways, I did want to say it's been a pleasure to serve council. It's been a pleasure to serve the residents of the Town of Essex and it's really been a pleasure to work with the staff who are very talented, very hardworking. There's many things I'm going to miss, but I'm certainly not going to miss every Monday's meeting. Anyway, that's, that's it. I just wanted to thank everybody and say it's been a pleasure. It's been a lot of fun.
We're going to miss you, Donna. Thanks a lot. Going to bylaws?
Item 17, bylaws 1780 for third reading this evening.
Could I get a mover for that bylaw? Counselor Bjorkman and Counselor Bowman. Any questions on that bylaw? All in favor? Skerry.
1789, also for third reading this evening.
Mover? Counselor Verbeek and Deputy Mayor Malasch, any questions on this bylaw? All in favor? Skerry.
1792, being a bylaw to provide for an interim tax levy and to provide for the payment of taxes and to provide for penalty and interest. That would be for third readings this evening.
Mover? Deputy Mayor Malasch and Counselor Garan, all in favor? Skerry.
And 1795, being the confirming bylaw for two readings this evening for this, sorry, for this March 4th regular council meeting.
Mover? Counselor Vannden-Don and Counselor Bowman, all in favor? Skerry.
Just before adjournment, Mr. Mayor, the reminder was supposed to be announced that Donna's retirement party will be Thursday in the Shaheen Room from 3:00 to 6:00. So be sure to be there.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, looking for adjournment. Yep, looking for adjournment. Counselor Vannden-Don and Counselor Verbeek, all in favor? Thank you very much, council and administrative staff.